All right. Call to order, the City of Woodinville Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, September 25, 2024. May we have the roll call, please?
Chair Stadler.
Here.
Vice Chair Yarbov.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Chernomorikov.
Here.
Commissioner Liang.
Here.
Commissioner Mesa.
Here.
Commissioner Krebs.
Here.
All right, we're all here, please. Commissioner Liang is joining us remotely. Please stand and join me in the flag salute. All right. Are there any changes to the agenda in order and content from any of the commissioners? All right, seeing none, we have our agenda for the evening. First item is going to be public comments. And Clerk's bringing forward the list. Thank you. When I call your name, please step forward to the podium. State your name, whether you're a resident of the City of Woodinville or not. And you have three minutes. First off, first up is Allison Farmer.
Good evening. Hi, Allison Farmer, living outside the city limits. So it seems those in power seem to be pushing this Main Street townhomes, no matter what the cost. And I've looked over the existing DA, and I'm confident that it was designed to revitalize Old Town, which I'm passionate about, rather than destroy it. So I would like to see some of the same features installed into this one. Also, let's make sure the pretty picture includes the much higher second row of houses. Parkings, my biggest worry. This proposal already confines and constricts Old Town. To take parking opportunities away from those existing businesses would squeeze them to death. Horses never took up that much space. Let's make sure the nine surface and the 37 parallel parking spots listed are not on public streets. Where's the entrance off the 173rd place to the upper garages meant to be? The lower ones don't even seem to have any. If this development is underparked, then let's make sure we get a bus stop. There is an environmentally sensitive area on the site, probably in the 5,500 urban forest area. This DA only has 1,400 square feet in that area. Is the sensitive area protected? And are they adhering to the 10% of open space? Significant trees need to be kept, along with the same archaeological oversight done, super mitigation measures, and tribal council required in the existing DA. 10% of affordable, of 37 townhomes is 3.7 townhomes, more if counting residential square footage. Not four tiny two-story apartments plonked on top of a 1,000-foot resale space. The existing DA has a five-foot-wide right-of-way dedication and fronted improvements on 126 Northeast. This should be kept, as it directly impacts the Mercantile Building and will give the new retail space an outdoor area. I also think the whole building on the corner should be a 2.5 or 3-story affordable retail space that's built in a historic character. Main Street are the contract buyers for West Point, a speculative purchase on the presumption that they would get ground floor residential approval. There are quite clear indications in this draft and from past actions that they intend to sell this townhome development on. To me, that's flipping land for profit. It's time to stop developers inflating our land prices and using our city for quick money. One thing you can do right now is make sure this DA is as robust as existing one and tie it to Main Street only. If they don't build it, it's gone. Also, we should not let developers carry over credits from other developments in the city. This leads to one site benefiting and another site suffering. One final thing, this entire housing proposal discriminates against anyone in a wheelchair. If this is legal, I'm not sure it should be, and Woodinville shouldn't be encouraging that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alex Campbell.
Hi, good evening. Good to see everybody tonight. I'm Alex Campbell. I do live within city limits. I'm here to discuss the Main Street proposed DA or Development Agreement. I know you all know that, regarding Old Town. Let me offer some general comments first. You are the first to get to a swing at changing the DA. Basically, this is an opportunity for Planning Commission to make sure that what is done matches the vision and future of Woodinville, not just what the developer wants. So feel free to, feel empowered to change the text, make it stronger, and make it fit what you see as good for Woodinville. On September 3rd Council's meeting, multiple Council members, including him, mentioned specifically that this would be a set of affordable townhomes. It was a sales pitch to the public. It was a promise to the public even. And more so, the head of Main Street themselves came, and she said, let me say, when she was making an example of what 80% AMI would look like, she said, "That would be townhome units that sell for $375,000 for a new townhome." She didn't say anything about apartments. Yet, that's what we're getting here. Apartments squeezed in above a corner store, physically and economically segregated. That's not what Woodinville does. So let me swing you back to 2004, when it opened. Greenbrier, 70-plus small cottages, designed and built as a affordable housing area. 28% of them are affordable. You don't know which one was which. I know some people who live there, they don't even know. It creates community to have identical affordable units. So that's why I'm really going to say that this is a situation where we should think better, make this fit Woodinville's goals, not the developer's goals. My suggestions: require affordable townhomes, no apartments. Increase the percentage of units. Why 10%? Why not 15, 20? I'm not going to ask for 28, that seems a little high, but we can ask for more. And require the developer to not offer simply $25,000 to the cookhouse. They killed the cookhouse the first time for Woodgate. They're about to do it again. I've been in touch with that developer. He estimates that to build out a new space with kitchen and so forth is $150,000 to $200,000. So $25,000, while something, is nothing close to keeping them alive. I will just end with a quick thought. Main Street's building retail space. They could easily lease one of those to the cookhouse, at a discount for five years. There you go. I'll leave that to you. You can all put that all into the DA tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everybody that has signed in. Anybody else in the audience care to make a public comment? All right, seeing no one. We will move on to Council Liaison Report. Mayor Millman, welcome.
Thank you. I wanted to start off and tell you that I received multiple compliments about our newest Planning Commissioners, and I wanted to relay that on. The comments generally stated that you were asking great questions and heavily involved, so I really appreciate you guys stepping up and getting those comments. To review our last meeting, we had a discussion of tenant rental protections. That was a council-driven motion. To boil it down to basically three different areas: notice of rent increases, limits on move-in fees, and also allowing installments of move-in expenses. There was other discussion on stuff, but the council's desire was not to get embroiled in some other rental protections that have wound up in legal mess, so we were trying to avoid that. Next item was ground floor residential council-driven. There's a prohibition on ground floor residential in the Old Town area. Council declined the proposed new ordinances. Staff recommended it as unnecessary, quote, "unnecessary and duplicative," as a ground floor residential is already not allowed in buildings facing public streets, which is most of Old Town. The narrow lots also make the ordinance impractical, based on the shallow lots that are over there, if everybody's familiar with that. Also, the city attorney advised against creating more ambiguity in the code. Next, council voted to avoid a recital, or, I'm sorry, council voted to add a recital capturing the intent to preserve the remaining portions of Old Town commercial. Discussion of an appointment to Woodinville to the Landmarks Commission was on our former, this was something I didn't even know existed, but apparently our former appointment, you're limited to two terms, and those terms have expired, so she's no longer eligible. So there was a discussion of appointing a new Landmarks representative to the county. And lastly, we advertised the Planning Commission opening, decided to advertise the Planning Commission opening that's been vacated by Commissioner Liang. I don't know if he's here yet, but that is going to go through, I think, the 7th, I believe. So look forward to interviewing for that.
Anything for the mayor? So you said the Planning Commission closes on the 7th. You anticipate council will interview then on the 8th? Your meeting on the 8th?
Is it 7th on Monday?
7th on Monday.
I don't have a definitive answer on that.
It's the 15th. They're looking, it's tentatively scheduled for the October 15th meeting for the interviews.
I was just curious if we would have somebody for our special meeting on the 9th, but apparently not. All right, thank you. All right, that will take us to our business and discussion items. The first item is election of the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair of Staff Report? That's what, well, you are the staff report. That's what my agenda says.
Okay, so we're going to be making nominations for the chair, and they'll be made from the floor. The commissioners need not be recognized by the presiding officer to make a nomination. No second is required. The vote will be taken for the chair first, with the results being announced before we proceed to the vice chair elections. Are there any questions before I call for nominations? All right, nominations are now in order for chair. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Kevin Stadler to be chair for the commission.
Are there any further nominations for chair? Okay, one last final time. All righty. If there's only one commissioner nominated, we're going to do a yea or nay vote. So I'll be calling your name. Commissioner Stadler.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Yarbov.
Yes.
Commissioner Chernomorikov.
Yes.
Commissioner Liang.
Yes.
Commissioner Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Krebs.
Aye.
All right.
Commissioner Stadler is elected chair. Congratulations.
Thank you, and thank you, commissioners. I do appreciate that. So now we will move on to the nomination for Vice Chair. Nominations will be made from the floor. Commissioners need not be recognized by the presiding officer to make a nomination. No second is required. And are there any questions from the commission before I call for nominations? Seeing none, are there any nominations?
I move to nominate Commissioner Steve Yarbov as Vice Chair.
Are there any other nominations? One more time, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we have one nomination for Vice Chair. We'll do the same procedure we did for Chair. May we have a roll call, please?
Chair Stadler.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Yarbov.
Yes.
Commissioner Chernomorikov.
Yes.
Commissioner Liang.
Yes.
Commissioner Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Krebs.
Aye.
All right, congratulations. Mr. Yarbov, you are elected Vice Chair, and once again, it's great to have you to my left.
Thank you. I appreciate your support and confidence, and look forward to serving again for another year for this excellent commission. And thank you very much.
All right, our next item is draft Planning Commission minutes of July 24, 2024, and September 11, 2024. Are there any additions, corrections to the minutes?
I move the minutes of July 24 and September 11 to be approved as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Yarbov and a second by Commissioner Krebs to approve the draft Planning Commission minutes of July 24, 2024, and September 11, 2024. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, they are approved. Okay, next business item is a public hearing on the North Shore School District's 2024-2030 Capital Facilities Plan. Staff report, please.
Good evening. My name's Dylan Roth, Senior Planner. This is Comprehensive Plan Amendment to adopt the latest Capital Facilities Plan adopted by the school district by reference. So we're amending our plan to adopt their facilities plan by reference. This is a follow-up from our study session two weeks ago on this item. I don't have a presentation, just one slide for posterity's sake. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Dylan. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing and accept public testimony?
I move to open the public hearing and accept public testimony.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Yarbov and a second by Commissioner Young to open the public hearing and accept public testimony. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstained? All right, the public hearing is open. Has anybody signed in? Nobody has signed in, so we'll close. Does anybody care to make any comment on that? Okay. With that...
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, a motion by Vice Chair Yarbov and a second by Commissioner Krebs to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, nay? And abstained? All right, the public hearing is closed.
Since there is, I don't know if the commission wishes to have any discussion or not on the staff report and the content of the CIP for the school district.
Were there any questions on anything?
Seeing none, I move to approve a recommendation to the City Council to adopt the North Shore School District 2024-2030 Capital Facilities Plan and amend the City of Woodinville Comprehensive Plan by reference.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Yarbov and a second by Commissioner Krebs to approve a recommendation to the City Council to adopt the North Shore School District 2024-2030 Capital Facilities Plan and amend the City of Woodinville Comprehensive Plan by reference. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? And abstained? All right, that recommendation is passed. Get my agenda back up here. Next item is a public hearing, that's that one. It is a public hearing on the Six-Year CIP Capital Improvement Plan, and we will have a staff report. Mr. O'Neill, are you with us?
I'm Keith Ellison.
Oh, you're going to present it. My agenda said Mr. O'Neill, so welcome, Keith. Good to see you.
I am standing in for him today, and I will be presenting for the public hearing for the 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Plan.
Just give me one minute. We need to open the public hearing first, so that it's part of the record.
I move to open the public hearing on the proposed 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Yarbov and a second by Commissioner Mesa to open the public hearing on the 2024... I'm still back on the line. Open the public hearing on the proposed 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Plan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? And abstained? All right, the public hearing is open. Now, Mr. Ellison, you have the floor.
All right, so previously stated, we're here for the public hearing for the 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Plan. Today's objectives will be to hold the public hearing, which we're doing right now. We'll go over a brief review of the planning process and the draft CIP, anticipated changes from the draft to the final plan. We'll have an opportunity for questions and comments, and then hopefully recommend adoption of the plan. So far, we've gone through public participation, where we received comments or received suggestions. We've looked at those suggestions and analyzed it and prioritized projects. We drafted the initial plan with funding estimates and recommended projects. Today, we're at the step where we're formalizing that plan, presenting the draft, receiving feedback for modifications, and then in October and December, we're looking to adopt that plan. There are two CIPs, one's a six-year and the other's a two-year. The six-year's long-term planning document. The two-year receives funding in the upcoming budget, and it's generally the first two years of the six-year plan. Projects typically receive full funding to make the two-year and often have multiple funding sources. There are funding limitations. Some of the sources are relatively volatile. We have many different sources: REIT, TIF, which is transportation impact fees, and park impact fees, and other sources. Each of these sources has different strings attached, different requirements, and this funding also includes grants that we go after. The contents of the plan, there are three main sections of it. There's the plan introduction and overview. The overall summary of project costs, which breaks it down by phases. And then the individual project pages, which provide descriptions, cost estimates broken down by phase, project tentative schedule, and revenue estimates. So what's expected to change in this plan? We will have additional financials. The removal of P13002, which is the Wooden Creek Trail, which was removed because of the developer pulling out of the project. There will be additional maps and images for new projects as they become available, and if needed, we'll be updating cost estimates. So summary of the six-year CIP. We have 72 total projects listed for a total of $260 million. Streets are the largest component of that, and you can see the breakdown here of the other types of projects. The two-year CIP is more refined, a smaller subset of that larger group, $75 million, a little over $75 million worth of projects. Again, streets is the largest with about $50 million, and the other categories are also all listed.
We have a question.
Yes.
If they're listed on the two-year CIP, are these already funded projects? Are these still projected costs and looking for revenue sources?
In some cases, we're still looking for revenue sources, but they are fully funded. If a grant becomes available for something, for instance, the construction phase of a project, and we can go after it, we'll try to secure that if it's being locally funded.
Thank you.
Questions at this time? So our next steps will be that the council will adopt it with the city biennial budget in November, December timeframe. Now we'd like to open it up for discussion.
Are there any questions of Vice Chair Yarbov?
One of the projects for which there was a lot of heat and energy over the last couple of years, it's apparently in the CIP for 2025, and I wanted to just confirm that, so through any rumors to the contrary, we could put them aside real quickly. That's the Wood Trails hiking trail.
What page are you on?
That's on page 183 of our booklet. This is the so-called Dave Henry hiking trail. And again, there was a lot of emotion expressed about this in the past, and I see that it's in here, so the plan is we're going to do it in 2025, correct? For Wood Trails, we've got a phase of construction that will be starting in about a week and a half. I think it was October 7th was the start date for construction for Phase 1. Asha, do you have any comments on the additional?
Sure. This is Asha, just as a Public Works Director. So Wood Trail, the Phase 2 or Phase 3 that we are calling right now, that was, the contract award was presented to council at the last meeting, and we had the kickoff meeting with the contractor earlier this week, and they plan on beginning work on October 7th. And the plan is to complete if the weather behaves. This is not weather-dependent like the street projects, but we are hoping to substantially complete that project by end of this year.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and for citizens who were concerned, you can put your concerns aside.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Being new here, I'm trying to understand the proportion of this plan to be on streets funding is very substantial. Is it standard? Is it relatively the same proportion as it was in the past? Is there any way to compare it to other cities? Again, just being new on this, trying to understand, is it standard, normal? Because it's very high.
For the streets to be much higher than others? Yeah. Streets are, first of all, very expensive construction and reconstruction, so the costs end up being very high anyway. Also tends to be our most used and most beat up of our infrastructure. Things like soft trails for parks, even bicycle trails don't tend to take the abuse that vehicular traffic streets will take. So yeah, it is very common for streets to be huge.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. In general, if you think about different portion of this plan, like streets, parks, et cetera, are there any dramatic changes versus the previous version of the plan? Or this proportion relatively stays the same?
I can jump in on that one. This year, we have, I think, maybe more numbers of surface water projects. I wanted to say we had three at least in the two-year CIP. Typically, we don't have that many CIP projects under surface water, so at least we have three projects. One is the 134th color replacement project, and then we also have two projects that are related. It's the Wooden Creek Evaluation, Wooden Creek Rechanalizing to reduce flooding and sedimentation. So in terms of from at least last seven years, eight years, I've been with the city and just seeing that trend, surface water definitely has taken a heavier load this year than past two or three CIPs.
Thank you.
Commissioner Young, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a real quick one. The Wooden Creek Trail plan said the developer pulled out. Was that the Green Partners developer, or who was that that pulled out? Which development?
So that is Wooden Creek, which is Widener project. It is, it is not, maybe not Mike. So there is portion of the trail that goes through Phase 5. That is the portion that has been removed. The developer has, as of now, paused on Phase 5, or the plans, future plans to be determined, abandoned per Mr. Grumbach. So that's why it's that section of trail that has been removed from the CIP.
Can I ask a follow-up? I think it applies someplace. Someplace else in here, they're talking about that same developer has left off 5, but they're still developing 4 and 6, or is there no reason to hold them accountable? Is that a separate development agreement for Phase 5?
The trail's on Phase 5.
Okay.
Four's north of that, so it doesn't cross in there. So yeah, they don't connect, and Phase 6 has nothing to do with the trail.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Mesa.
Thank you. I had a question regarding some of the projects. I know in the past, there had been interest expressed from the public. I know in the past, there had been interest expressed from the public and some talks about adding a dog park within Woodenville, but I don't see any such project added. Was that considered at all?
So during evaluating all the projects and prioritizing projects, yes, those were evaluated. So there is also Wooden Creek Park, that was one possibility. We are also doing the East Trail Corridor planning, that is a possibility to potentially have dog park in there. So those were evaluated, and they were prioritized and based on the priorities and how they were rated, that's what's presented in the draft CIP.
Got it. And I see also this project listed called Bicycle Pump Track. What is a bicycle pump track? I'm on 190.
That is similar to a BMX track. Has a little bit of, I think mostly it's a dirt track, and obviously I'm too old to really know this stuff, but it's kind of a dirt trail that they put in for the younger people to ride on.
The reason I ask is because I'm assuming that there would be more interest for a dog park over a bicycle pump track, so I'm just curious how we prioritize those.
The priorities also come in terms of feasibility, in terms of, especially that project, the pump track has also the land requirement for it as well. So it's not just one criteria or one element of the project is prioritized, it is prioritized in terms of timing, in terms of synergy with other projects, in terms of obligations on other projects, in terms of grants, funds. So there are a lot of multitudes of criteria that are very valued for each project.
And Asha, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that looks like that's listed, that's actually not even, it's listed in the plan, but it's actually not part of the six-year plan because it's listed as a future, so it's really kind of a parking lot project.
Correct. Yep, that is correct.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Lang, you have any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I'm happy to see that there is some money for the streetlights along Northeast 181st Place. This is ST 23-002 on page 146. That street is very, very dark, and especially on a night like tonight, when it's getting darker earlier and rainy and wet, I know the residents of that area will be very appreciative of that, so thank you. With that, has anybody signed in to provide public testimony? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and make public testimony? Seeing none, may we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second? I have a motion by Vice Chair Yarbov and a second by Commissioner Meza to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And abstained? The public hearing is closed.
I move that the Planning Commission approve a recommendation on the proposed 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Plan as presented. And forward this recommendation to the City Council.
All right. I have a motion by Vice Chair Yarbov and a second by several commissioners. I will take the last one I heard, which was Commissioner Lang, that the Planning Commission approve a recommendation on the proposed 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Plan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And abstained? All right, that recommendation passes.
Thank you.
All right, that's number four. Now we'll move on to item number five, discussion on the Main Street Townhomes Development Agreement. Director Gumbach.
Good evening, Commissioners. Let me go ahead and bring my PowerPoint up. Just taking a second. All right, as noted, this is a discussion item on the Main Street Properties' request for a development agreement. Before I get started on this, I just want to note that the draft that's in your packet is a preliminary draft. In addition to whatever comments we hear tonight from the commission, there still may be some of the other terms and stuff in there that may still be also negotiated further, so we use this just so we could have the discussion tonight, but I just wanted you to be aware, because we do have a tentative hearing scheduled for your regular meeting in October, which I keep forgetting if it's, I think it's the 23rd. So again, we'll take back what you have tonight, but there also may be additional edits that you may see in this thing as well. So I just wanted to start out by highlighting that. Just basically, it's not a very long presentation, because it's actually a fairly short development agreement, but I just want to outline the presentation. I'm going to do a quick review of the project, what is being requested by Main Street. We'll talk about the list of public benefits real quick over some of the other terms, and then questions. But even though I have that slide, as always, if you have questions in the course of while I'm talking about this, feel free to stop me and ask those questions, because again, as I mentioned, this is a study session slash discussion, so. All right, so start out here with Main Street Properties is requesting to develop the property owned by West Point Properties. Some of you may recall, there was a development agreement for that site quite a few years ago, actually almost five years ago, I think it was now. The property's over there at 12461 Northeast Woodenville Drive. Their proposal is to provide 37 market-rate townhomes for multifamily units that would be restricted to 80% area medium income. Often, we refer to that as affordable housing for the low-income group. They are also proposing a 1,000-square-foot corner neighborhood retail slash food service space. This, and I think some of this may have been noted in an earlier comment, the four-dwelling units, those multifamily units, would be on top of that building, so essentially, it's a small mixed-use building is what's being proposed. The project would also involve demolishing the existing properties, or excuse me, the existing buildings on the site, which includes an existing 3,553 square-foot commercial building. And then there are three small, single-family dwellings on the site as well. I think these may be some of the last single-family detatudes we might have in the CBD zone. But anyway, and I gave you kind of the square footage according to King County records, the largest one of them is only 736 square feet, and then you've got one that's almost the size of a tiny house at 310, and then another one at 420 square feet. So this is the concept site plan and drawing that they're looking to do. You can see here that they're looking to try to put townhomes along Northeast Woodenville Drive, as well as along Northeast 173rd Place. They would be having a drive aisle, driveline down the center of this that would provide access to the parking garages that would be interior to the development. Over there in that one corner, you can see where they'd have the mixed-use building with the multifamily and their small retail space. And let's see what else is worth noting, a little bit of the open space where they're trying to put some of that around on this as well. A couple of the other pictures in here, the concept, I think you, I think you may have shown this picture of the design of the townhouses previously. Do want to again qualify that this has not necessarily been reviewed for code compliance, so what you're seeing here is more of a concept, but it hasn't been reviewed for compliance yet. And then they also provided a side view of the site, so you can kind of get an idea of how those townhomes would fit along the two streets there, because I think most of you are familiar, the property has a fairly steep slope on it, and so you've got some major elevation changes between the two public streets. So I mentioned a moment ago about the West Point, just again, for those that were here before or those that aren't familiar, this was the project that had a development agreement approved for it, and that development agreement is currently active, although if Main Street does purchase the property, moves forward with their project, this one and the DA will be abandoned. That's actually something, we've been talking with the attorney on how you would go about that, so there will be an action to make sure that the current West Point DA would be abandoned, and then this new DA, if it ends up being approved by the council, would be the one that will take its place. But the old one, it was a 10-year. It involved 161 multifamily dwelling units, 24,253 square feet of commercial, and 230 parking stalls. And I would note, if I remember correctly, and Amanda may remember this better than I do, the multifamily dwellings, I think, kind of ranged in size originally. They were proposed in between like about 400 to about 700, 800 square feet, so you kind of had a range in that medium to smaller size was the original plans for it. But essentially, nobody, at least from what we heard, nobody really could make this thing pencil out, so it's one of the reasons why the property owner is looking to potentially abandon this and sell the properties to Main Street with their project.
Commissioner Krebs.
Thank you. Does Main Street Group own the property right now, or it's a possibility if some of these changes are made?
Right now, West Point is the current properties, owns the property, they still own the property. I believe Main Street has it on contingency, and depending on, and I don't know what the terms of contingency are, but I would presume that is dependent on the development agreement, and there's an ordinance also going through that those are all approved by the council before they probably would purchase the property. I don't know that for a fact, but I suspect that that would be the case. Any other questions?
Not at all.
Okay, so I want to talk real quick. You heard the mayor talk about that in the liaison report. Council had their first reading of this, of the ordinance that was originally up in front of the Planning Commission for discussing before you decided to recommend no changes. So council took a look and actually decided to move forward, but it wasn't the same original proposal you were looking at. It actually only involves that one section of Old Town. Essentially, this is the West Point properties. The remaining properties would remain the same, so there would be no changes there. And the second reading on this, as I noted, would be October 15th. And the main thing that this ordinance does, Central Business District currently does allow in certain parts through a development agreement, will allow for ground-floor dwelling units to be along public streets. Generally, they're prohibited, except for where there's a map, and if this ordinance passes here in the Old Town where this area is highlighted, those are the only places where you can have a ground-floor dwelling unit face along a public street if a development agreement authorizes it. So before I go on to the next slide, because this had been in front of you, is there any questions about this?
Commissioner Krebs.
Thank you. Would this such a small targeted rezone not be considered a spot zoning?
Not necessarily. We don't believe it is, because it's not like an individual, single parcel, there's actually multiple parcels involved, and the fact that it has one ownership by itself does not make it spot zoning. Usually, spot zoning is more like when you're trying to pull out, and this is actually not a zoning map change, right? Usually, when you think about zoning, spot zoning, it's usually about like taking a zoning district and applying it only like maybe to a single property to benefit a particular property owner. In this case, you're only amending the development regulation, and while this is talking about Old Town here, that allowance for residential, for dwelling units on the ground floor is not just this property, it's allowed in other parts of the Central Business District as well. So there's nothing around this that would actually make this look like, actually that I believe would qualify as spot zoning on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this?
Nope.
So what's being requested by Main Street? So typically, with most development agreements, everybody always asks to be able to vest into the zoning regulations in effect, and that would also include this ordinance 767, which I would note, by the time council would take action on this, that ordinance is going to be completed in effect anyway. But they're asking to be vesting into the existing zoning. They want, they're asking for the authorization that ordinance 767 would provide about having the ground-floor dwelling units along the two public streets. Then they're also asking for vesting in impact fees, including the park impact fees, which there's no plans to change those. Transportation impact fees would be vested based on the time the agreement is signed. We actually do anticipate that the transportation impact fees will be modified and will be changed before this agreement is signed, so they'll likely be vesting into the new transportation impact fees. School impact fees are not included in the vesting. And then there's also a request basically to make available easements for construction. This mostly has to do with the right-of-way. Sometimes, like for example, when they're building, when they have to dig into the ground, they have to do shoring, and a lot of times, they'll need tiebacks to hold those shoring walls up, and those may need to go into the right-of-way. We typically do authorize this for most construction projects, so that's not actually a unique request, it's kind of a pretty common thing, and we typically don't even necessarily require them to be in a development agreement, but they just wanted to have some clarity on that, and so they had that request in here.
Commissioner Meza.
If we're authorizing the ground-floor residential, does that mean that this project does not have commercial at all, or?
It has a 1,000-square-foot, square feet of commercial that they're proposing.
And is that still on the ground floor?
Yes.
Okay, but it's just limited, I guess, it's not the entire?
No, it's a small, if they had, if this was a mixed-use building and they were putting the residential on the second floor up, they wouldn't need a development agreement.
Got it, thank you.
And I would note, the development agreement is part of the requirement out of the ordinance 767, too.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Yarbov.
I guess I have a technical question. On pages 214 and 215, there are sections 10.2.1 and 10.2.2, and I wondered if you could add some explanation in there as to what the impact and meaning of those two sections is.
On page 214 and 215?
Correct.
All right, let me catch up with you. All right, on 214, which section?
10.2.1 and 10.2.2.
All right, so 10.2.1 is just basically interpretations of the development agreement, so that's just basically, yeah, so it's basically talking, because the RCW is what, that authorizes development agreements. So I mean, basically, that's all it is, is it's just basically, it's more of the legalese stuff, the attorney's reviewed through this language, so that's reflecting what the attorney would want in there. And then the other piece here, this agreement has been reviewed and revised by legal, yeah, again, same thing. You're talking about 10.2.2 is the other question?
Yeah.
Yeah, again, those are just legal things that the attorneys have, has reviewed and actually supports that language.
Fine, I appreciate your explanation in English.
All right, so what are the public benefits being provided? So already kind of mentioned, four multifamily dwellings will be available for households with incomes at 80% area medium income, so that'll be one of the provisions. And I would note, by the way, that I don't believe that the tax breaks that we authorize, you know, when you do affordable housing in the CBD, I don't believe it extends to this, so there actually isn't any property tax breaks associated with this. They would also offer the commercial tenant relocation assistance, they're offering up to $25,000. There are conditions as to when that would be offered. And then one of the things that I thought was interesting on this is that they would sell the commercial space at cost without a profit. So basically, they're building the commercial space to give it away, but they do want to recover the cost that it will be for them to build it, but essentially, they will not get anything in return on that. And then there was another part, because there's concerns about, you know, okay, you kick out the current restaurant there, and they wanted, and then demo, and then the site sits follow for, you know, a couple of years or something like that. Wanted to not have that happen, so there's a, there is a condition in there that says basically no demolition of existing buildings until the site development permit for the project is issued. And then finally, and this is one of the things that was really important to City Council, is that the townhouses and the multifamily units, the affordable units, will all be available for individual home ownerships. So Main Street doesn't plan to hold on to this. After things are built, they will be having these properties sold to individual property owners. We did add a clause in there, because there was one concern, because you do see this sometimes happen, where you might have somebody come in and scoop everything up, and then they turn around and want to rent everything out. So there's a clause in there that that's not to be the case, at least, you know, doesn't mean that people that buy these individually may not themselves in 20 or 30 years from now do something different, but we don't control what, we don't control that far down, but at least in the initial sales and stuff on this, it will be for individual ownership, which is again, a major goal of the City Council in trying to promote homeownership for these properties. Don't know if these will be condominiums, or if we have this new requirement from the GMA on how we might be able to create these small, what they call lot subdivision developments, which is basically be able to create fee simple just around the parameters, but either way, they'll have the setup for homeownership either through condominium or through this new fee simple regulations that you'll be seeing probably sometime early part of next year.
Commissioner Krebs.
Thank you. Just to make sure I fully understand, the commercial space that's going to be sold, that will be sold to a company or a business versus a property manager to be rented to a tenant?
Yeah, I don't remember all the particular, there's some terminology and stuff around this. I just gave the really quick, short piece up in here, but essentially, it will be sold at cost without profit. We did, we did, we did bounce around internally about how far to con- We did, we did, we did bounce around internally about how far to condition this. But one of the things we need to be careful about is if you get too specific about who this can be sold to, it's not going to get sold and it's going to sit vacant. And that's one of the things we don't want have happening. So was, we were kind of pondering through about the conditions around, because at the end of the day, Main Street doesn't plan to hang on to this. So they, at the end of the day, don't really care about what terms might be around it. But the city does have concerns in that if there's too much restricted covenants on this, then the building, this space, even though it's small, is going to sit vacant because it's not going to work for anybody or you're not going to be able to find somebody to be able to buy it. So that was the concern. So what you see in there is a reflection of that.
Commissioner Lang and then Commissioner Chair Tomovikov.
Yes, I have a question about this relocation assistance because there are multiple talents affected by this. And especially in the land, this land business is really hard to find a suitable place, you know, to relocate to. And chances that, that their businesses will be disrupted for an extended period of time. I mean, I mean, $25,000 seems to have pittance to compare to whatever trouble they have to go through. Is that going to be adequate to cover their expenses?
So a couple of things I'll note real quick. The restaurant in there knew that they were only in there temporarily. That's, that's not news to them. They never moved into that place with the expectation that that was their permanent home. Because there was already a development agreement and redevelopment of that site had already, was in place when they actually did move into the site. So in terms of whether this costs their redevelopment stuff, I don't know if it does or doesn't. I know that Brandon, the city manager, has had some conversations with, I believe, the restaurant owner and has talked a little bit through some of this. But whether it would cover the full cost or not, I don't know for a fact one way or the other. But as I mentioned again, they did know and they, they always had that expectation and an understanding that they would be moving out of that. It was only a short term that they were going to be in that facility.
Commissioner Chair Tomovikov.
Thank you. I think at the beginning of this presentation is shown there is commercial, but also some dwelling units in this property. So what's happening with them?
They, I would be, nobody's actually, which is a great question because I don't think anybody's really asked about that. But they would also be under, probably should be under the understanding that it was short term because, again, there was this development agreement to redevelop the property in the first place. So none of the, and it's been in place for five years, so none of this should be new to anybody. So I don't know what the plans are for those tenants. That might be something you might want to suggest in here and we can talk with the Main Street properties about if there is a desire for the planning commission to check in on that. But I don't know exactly what the plans are for the tenants in those three.
Yeah, it's great to see, to hear that there was communication to tenants and commercial side, probably good to make sure that those who use dwelling also fully aware and have a contact with the staff. Thank you.
Vice Chair Yavroff.
In reading over the packet, it was not clear that the affordable housing units were going to be ownership properties. And so I'd really like to make sure that's confirmed and specified that that is the case.
I believe it says all, I think it has a clause in there and I don't think it excludes out anything. I think it had a clause in there that basically everything is ownership opportunity, if I'm not mistaken.
So that was one, that was one of the areas of concern I had. The other thing that really bothers me about this, we have a situation of affordable housing segregated from all the rest of the housing units. And whereas Greenbrier, for example, which had them all integrated, so you have a community, this proposal separates out the affordable housing units. And I'm concerned there will be a stigma attached to those residents and to those housing units. And I guess I would be a lot happier to see something where the affordable housing units are somehow integrated. Because I think segregation, no matter how it's couched, is not a good thing for Woodinville.
Yeah, I would note, and that's a great comment, but I would note for the Greenbrier, it's not an apples to apples comparison because the Greenbrier project was actually a joint project and it was not by a private developer. It was actually, Arch was involved with that project. So it's not exactly an apples to apples comparison. But in terms of the rest, yeah, I mean, that's, it's a great, it's a comment to be made and it's a good comment and you guys might want to talk about that.
Is it possible Arch could somehow be involved to help do the integration of the affordable units?
Arch will help us manage them later on because Arch will provide that resource. But they're not involved through the construction part of it. They have no, they have no dollars involved in this. So Arch would not be involved with this project at all. But what they will be involved with is once the units are turned over and the deed restrictions and stuff are, in helping, helping, just like Greenbrier, we can look to them for help in managing to make sure that these do stay affordable.
And I wanted to also confirm, you said there'll be no MFTE involved on this project?
My understanding is that there will be. I don't believe the MFTE extends to the Old Town, I believe. And I know that there hasn't been any discussion about that. And again, Main Street doesn't really care one way or the other about it because it doesn't, if they're selling the units off, there's no benefits for them on it. So in terms of, for them, the MFTE program doesn't work for them on this one.
Okay, so again, there's no MFTE element in the project. Is that true or?
At this point, there has not been, there is not. And again, as I mentioned, because for Main Street, it doesn't provide them any benefit one way or the other because they're selling the units.
And is there any way we can encourage them to increase the relocation expenses? $25,000 seems almost insultingly low for.
Again, I think that's the conversation. And if that's a recommendation, you can come up with a number and we will take it back to Main Street.
Start at $100,000. I guess that's one of the things. The other thing is we're looking at needing something the order of 1,800 affordable units, 80% AMI and below. Four seems like a drop in the bucket. And wondered if we could also encourage a little more?
Again, you can ask for additional, but again, don't convolute the comment that you made about the 1,800, which is a different provision and requirement versus the stuff when we're trying to get the housing at 80%. Those are not the same thing. They're different. Because the other thing is a planning exercise and has to deal more with housing types versus this is actually where we're working to try to get actual units in at those AMI.
Well, I think anything we can do to encourage more affordable housing would be a plus. And again, we, whatever we can do to encourage it, I think we need to do. Thank you.
Commissioner Young.
I'm going to have a hard time organizing my thoughts on this. I agree with Steve in the, the different housing for the 80% people. The idea that there will be the stigma attached to people who are in the multi-unit housing as opposed to a townhome. I think, I think that instead of, I think the Living Futures Institute has a study that talks about how mixed income is good for everybody. But when you put a stigma on it where one group is in a smaller house or a lesser house, that, that isn't good for everybody. So I would agree with your comment about that. That's concerning. I'm saddened, so I'm going to ask a question. Currently, Old Town provides some community and some bit of urban center. I understand that right now, there is a much larger development in store for this area if we don't do this one, right? We've got multiple stories that they can put in if they don't do this. They've not been able to get somebody to want to do that, if I understand correctly.
Well, the way I would answer that is that there is a project that's much larger that was proposed, but it's been five years and nothing's happened with it.
Right.
So you can draw your own conclusions from that.
Right. So here a community grasping at wanting to keep it just the way it is. So that's my follow-up question. People want to keep it just the way it is and they want to keep the rest of Old Town just the way it is. And is that part of the option in this conversation? Or is it no matter what, it's getting developed at some point?
Well, we're already, I mean, we've already started seeing redevelopment happen in Old Town.
Right.
This isn't the first project actually in Old Town. There was some other recent, one project ended up getting abandoned and another one actually got built over there. And there was a little bit of a period where there was a bit more interest from developers. Everything's kind of cooled off in general. But if the market picks back up again, residential or no residential, that stuff could pick up again and you could see redevelopment. I think one of the council members indicated, I mean, the real issue that people are bringing up is not necessarily specifically about the townhouses. It's just the fact of redevelopment happening, which is always a stressful thing because change can be hard for folks. But it is the reality. I mean, you wouldn't have a house where you're living today if there hadn't been change at some point. And so that's just always an ongoing thing that happens in cities.
I had one more. Nope, I think that's it.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Mesa.
Thank you. I just wanted to get some clarity. The way that it's ran out in the packet in section 8 dot 1 dot 1, affordable housing, it says provide 10% of the units, four units total for purchase at 80% AMI. It doesn't say the townhomes or the multifamilies. So, but I believe you had expressed that it would be the townhomes. Is that accurate?
No, they've expressed it will be the multifamily.
Okay. So the four multifamily units would be the affordable housing units. I think at a minimum, it should be made clear here which ones are the affordable housing units. Because otherwise, it's not obvious. And then when we say that they would be made available at AMI, 80% AMI, is that at the time that the construction is completed and they go up for sale? Like which AMI do we use?
Well, you're getting into the question about, because AMI obviously changes every year. And most, most likely, it'll be the AMI at the time that the units are for sale. Because otherwise, if it's, if you, like, if you wanted to lock it in today, then it's going to be less than 80% AMI because you base, you base that percentage at the time of what the AMI is at the time something is selling.
So it would be less affordable, you're saying, if we lock it in today?
No, I mean, if you lock, if it got locked in today, then the AMI would actually be less, the proposal actually would end up being less than 80% AMI. So I mean, it may be 78, maybe 79% AMI or something like that.
Yeah, the reason I ask is because, yeah, the prices only keep going up. And developers usually ask to vest things right away. I feel it's only fair that we also ask that we vest the AMI price right away also.
Yeah, I mean, I think they would love to be able to vest costs, but as you know, costs don't tend to vest. And they do go up over time. Even in the Greenbrier project, there are escalator clauses based on when people sell or re-rent. There are escalator clauses built into that so that those prices do go up over time.
Yeah. And then the, the other thought I had was, can the city purchase some of these units to lock in those prices now and then sell them later on or manage them ourselves or something? So we can provide some social housing.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the council wanted to implement a program to buy up housing here in Woodinville, doesn't matter if it's in this project or anywhere in the city, if they wanted to initiate, to do something like that, they certainly, it's within their powers to do that. I don't know if it's, I don't know from a cost and taxation thing whether that would be popular. But if there was a desire by this community and the council picked up on that, to buy, you know, to take taxpayers' dollars and buy units for this kind of stuff, then that's, it is certainly a possibility.
Yeah, and the reason why I bring that up is because there have been some efforts, specifically in Seattle, to start building and purchasing housing that is owned by the city, what they call social housing, as an effort to stabilize prices. So housing stock that would be owned by the city would provide some sort of stabilization force to market prices so that they don't just swing, you know, really high, super fast. Because we would control the rents and we would provide some alternative that people can come to as opposed to what the market rate is. So just a thought, a suggestion. Thank you.
Commissioner Krebs. Can I, do you have any more slides?
Do I? Sir, did I get all the way to?
I just want, I mean, if.
What was being requested, that's what we, I talked about that. We talked, we were on the public benefits, I think, correct? Yeah, and the only other thing was these other notes. There was a thing about concurrency. I don't actually think that that's going to be completed, but there was a holding, letting you know there's 10 years. City manager can determine amendments and most of the other things are typical administrative terms that you see in there. So those, that was into my slides.
Okay. Commissioner Krebs.
Thank you. So Main Street plans on selling each of these units for ownership. That includes the multifamily units?
Yes.
So they'd be, I guess, might not call them a condo, but almost like an opportunity to buy the individual condos. So there wouldn't be apartments?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, as I always like note for folks, apartments and condos are types of ownership. And so these would be either condos or they would be fee simple.
So technically, a condominium, those, those are considered apartments, but you own the apartment and you're in a condominium association. So to say an apartment is rental, a condo is owned, they still refer to them as apartments, even if they're individually.
Right, but from a zoning definition, multifamily is actually what they are. They're actually classified as a multifamily dwelling type. And then apartment would be the rental and the condo would be an ownership or would be, yeah, an ownership. But people do use the word apartment pretty interchangeably with multifamily.
Okay. Anybody else? Can you go back to slide three?
Three?
Yeah. I was looking at something else when you had that one up. So this is where I think Commissioner Mesa was saying it's not clear that those would be owner, the four multifamily units that will be restricted to 80% of area median income. And when we talk about that 80%, that's just a flat out 80% of what the area median income is. We don't take into account King County's housing numbers that for a family of, a single, you know, family of one, it's this much, family of two, it's this much. It's just straight across 80%.
Well, the AMI is based on households. So there's AMI for four. There's, there's different levels depending on the, what you're basing it on, if it's on the four. By the way, I do want to note, section 8.1.5 for sale housing units offer townhouses and multifamily units for sale to separate homeownership. So everything is being offered, including the affordable units. What, what they're, what Main Street has proposed as the affordable units.
So again, then, my question is, four multifamily units, we don't know how many bedrooms each unit is going to be at this time. I think it said they're going to be between like 950 and 1,000 square feet. So I'm assuming they're probably going to be two-bedroom units?
Yeah, I mean, some, sometimes I think you can get three, but I, they, since we haven't seen development plans, I don't know how many bedrooms.
Okay. So it could be different AMIs. So as far as the, you know, having the affordable units and, and not part of the townhomes and the stigmatization, I will say I am below 80% AMI income. And I would have no problem living there, next to those townhomes. So I think that's, that's kind of a silly notion to make on that. Commissioner Krebs.
Thank you. And for clarification, so the four units that would be 80% AMI, would that be both sold at 80% of fair market rate? Plus those applying for purchase have to be at 80% AMI in terms of their individual income or family income?
Yeah, usually it's both, it's both sides of that equation. And again, you know, typically when you're looking at AMI, it's usually for a family of fours, usually the line that's usually used on it. But then when you're looking at the income of whoever's coming in there, it would be the number of people in the household would be the determining factor on it. But you are, by the way, bringing up things that gets into some of the complexities of trying to manage some of this stuff.
Commissioner Young.
Oh, was that me? I appreciate Kevin's comment. It made me think a little bit more.[1766.81]
And so I take back my, they should all be the same units, it was good to hear your words. I still, what I'm struggling with both, and most is, is in that last meeting, we saw these curves. That way, they were, there was the curve of the income of people who live in Woodinville, and the amount that housing was going up. And I struggle to understand how only 10% of their housing at 80% AMI helps move that curve. Like, if all of our developers came in and offered us 10% of AMI, would that help move the curve? And not trying to single out this developer, I just wonder how we start moving that curve?
Yeah, I mean, how you're going to move the curve is actually supply. And by getting more units in here, and we're not talking about just 80% AMI. When I'm talking about units, I'm talking about the moderate income as well, which most of our, you know, most of the housing units that are built, like in the CBD, these multifamily units, those tend to be, and even a lot of the townhouses, but not all of them, do tend to be in the moderate range. And then your high, your high-income range tends to be the detached, single-family units. And if you go down like to the Wine Village projects, a lot of those townhouses are actually in the higher range too, because some of them are going for three or four million dollars. But typically, if you really want to move that, if you're trying to move that needle, so that we're a little bit more consistent with like the rest of King County, and maybe even the state of Washington, it's basically, it's a supply issue in building, more supply just in general, and not just low income, but also the moderate income, and trying to promote those too.
And then I want to recognize the biggest lesson I learned from my last time here. The Harvest Center, when they came in and asked us if they could put in more areas, they said they were going to, if we gave them more space, they were going to give us affordable housing. And I just heard you say.
And we said, no, you're not doing that.
Yeah, they didn't.
Yeah, no, nobody believed them at that time.
Okay, so that should have been a development agreement as soon as they spoke, when they made that promise. So that's the lesson I want to make sure we're learning.
Yeah, because I do remember Jim Tosti trying to make that comment, and I think we quickly shut that down in the meeting.
Yeah, I think we all laughed, yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mesa.
Thank you. Is it possible to build more multifamily units in this lot or in this project? Or are they maxed out at this point?
I mean, is it possible? It's absolutely possible, but they're not proposing to do it.
Yeah. My suggestion would be to ask for more affordable units, at a minimum, double it. Based on your comment, we do need more supply. So I would say, that would be my suggestion, instead of four, ask for eight.
So you're suggesting having, like, instead of that mixed-use building, being in like a single-story with four units, that maybe it's two-story, or it's an additional story with multifamily on it?
Correct, yes.
Anybody else have anything? Commissioner Young.
I think I want us to all think about the unintentional consequences, as a Steve quote, of our best intentions, that there is still a possibility that the economy could change, and somebody could come in and want to put in those giant, somebody will decide to start putting in the multi-story, no-agreement kind of thing, that would at least give them ground for businesses, but would have a lot more people and a lot more cars, and a lot more building, I guess. Just a thought, unintentional consequences. We're shooting for something that we might not get, and they'll end up developing everything.
Vice Chair Yarov, did you have something?
One of the things, I'm looking on page 213, and section eight point one, there are a number of elements in here, which I found somewhat reassuring. One is, eight point one, they're talking about 80% AMI on the affordable units. These are going to be solely available for sale. They're talking eight point one dot five, the offer of townhomes and multifamily units for sale to separate ownerships, and the intent of this provision is to prevent a bulk sale of the residential units to an entity that would in turn rent all of the majority of the residential units. So, trying to prevent the corporation from coming in and buying them up, and then saying, now we're going to jack up rents. So I think that's a nice provision. And I'm heartened that, under eight point one dot one, they're saying these affordable units are going to be made available for sale, so it's clearly spelled out. The, I guess the only thing that still sticks in my craw is the segregation. And I know how that can be done, since I've seen some things went on in the South years ago. I don't want to see this kind of segregation going on in Woodinville, because I don't think it's constructive for the city or the residents who are there, those who might be in the affordable units, those who might be in the market-rate units. So I'd really like to see something that can be done to integrate the affordable units in some fashion. It might be have one or two of the affordable units be in the townhome area, or something like this. Even if they're smaller units, they can be affordable, you have more of the community sort of thing. And if you have market-rate units in that group of four, one or two of those, that helps to provide community and integrate the whole group of units.
Commissioner Mesa.
On section eight point one dot five, I like the intent of that also, that we're trying to make sure that it's separate homeowners. Is it possible to add words to say that it must be separate real people owners? Meaning, that you can't just create, you know, four different LLCs and then try to buy it that way? Because that is something that big corporations do.
Yeah, I mean, there's always games that can happen. I'm not sure even that language, if there is any language that may not 100% prevent that game from getting played. But I think the general approach and the intent on this may still give an ability, if Main Street was to try to sell this to some LLCs. Well, you've got to be careful when you talk about LLCs, because I know of LLCs that buy single houses too, and aren't buying up all the units and everything around. So you always have to be careful about that kind of terminology, because an LLC can still also be a single ownership. It's not uncommon. So, I don't know, you know, again, the intent and the spirit of this is pretty much laid out. And to the extent that we can regulate and follow that, and make sure Main Street sells it that way, you know, we'll do what we can with the enforcement on it.
Thank you.
So, I would like to see if we can put something in there that, so when you build condos or places that are in a homeownership, in an HOA, the builder creates the declaration, and then turns it over to the Owners Association. Recently, the state of Washington just changed the law. There used to be three different statutes that covered that type of thing. You had the the Condo Act, which was for older condos that were built prior to 1991. You had the New Condo Act that was built, for condos built after 91. And then you had the Homeowners Association Act, which covered single-family homes, and would cover townhomes as well. Now they've put them all together in one statute. So it's much easier to do certain things. And one of the things that I'm wondering if we can do is require the declarant, which would be Main Street, to put in there a rental restriction at the time. So that when it's handed over to the Owners Association, that rental restriction is in there.
So, in other words, have a declaration on the affordable units you're talking about?
No, on all of them, well, yeah. You'd have the declaration on rental units on those that are sold at the 80% AMI.
So you're talking about having a declaration about, you mean, like prohibiting renting?
Well, I don't know, see, I don't, yes. There would be a rental restriction on restricting those units. But I don't know if you could do it, you'd probably have to have two different declarations, because I don't think you could separate them out. I'm just trying to find a way to make sure that we put in there that those units can't be rented.
Yeah, I think one of the, yeah, the one thing I think we always, that gets a little challenge on that, and maybe, because it's not something the city can enforce, it ends up being up to the Homeowners Association. So it really, I mean, we can certainly put that in there, but the Homeowners Association becomes ultimately the one that decides to enforce it or not enforce it, not the city.
Right, no, I understand that. Just if it's in there, a lot of times, usually, it's harder to put that in than to take it out.
I can, we can ask Main Street their thoughts about that.
Yeah, or could there be a deed restriction on it?
Again, the difficulty is who's going to enforce it.
Right, no, I understand, but.
Yeah, because the city's not going to enforce those, those are all private property situations.
Commissioner Krebs?
Thanks, before we move on, just to, I guess, make my position clear. I agree with some of the comments here, that I think that four affordable housing units is too small. I would like to see a larger number, at least the city, working towards a larger number. I would like to see some of the townhomes be available at, you know, 8% AMI. For example, kind of help maybe get at the middle housing issue we're working at with our Housing Action Plan. And I also agree that 25,000 for relocation assistance is helpful, but even if you're just building out an office space with hollow walls, it's well north of 25,000 dollars, so you're not going to help much. It's, you know, better than a kick in the pants, but not much.
Okay, anything else?
All right, I think I've got the notes on this. Like I said, so the next step on this is, I'll share all this with Brandon, and he, because he's the main negotiator. He'll talk with Main Street, and we'll complete whatever stuff gets negotiated. That will be coming back to you for that hearing in October.
I just have one last comment on, you know, talking about having the townhomes at 80% of AMI. I would, if we want to do something like that, bump that up, because it's going to be really, really hard to construct a townhome and sell it at some, sell it to somebody that's at 80% of AMI, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, if I'm being honest, I don't think Main Street's going to go for it.
Yeah, just the, you know, now if we could bump that, you know, and say 100% or something, then maybe that's a number we can work with on the town, you know, a couple of the townhomes at that point. But I don't, to expect them to build a townhome and sell it at 80% of AMI, that is just not realistic. It's just not. 1,050 square foot condo in my community just sold for 525,000 dollars. Well, somebody making 80% of AMI is not going to be able to afford that. And you're not going to be able to build a townhome that's going to be 500, you know, less than that. So it'd be interesting to bring back and show us what, somebody at 80% of AMI, what they could afford in a house, what that is going to have to sell for? If that townhome would have to sell for, to somebody making 80% of AMI?
Yeah, I mean, Arch actually already has information on what those incomes and stuff are. So that information's, I think, is fairly, I don't know if I'll be able to get the exact number on the houses, but because, you know, interest rates and all these other things can play into what the price of the house.
Right, no, and I mean, yeah, it's, you know, it's what the interest rate is, with their income-to-debt ratio, and that kind of thing. But, you know, you can get a kind of a range there, but I think that would be interesting to see. Vice Chair Yarov.
Thinking back in my days when we were struggling buying houses, and at one point, we had two houses, two mortgages, and our, probably 50, 60% of our income was in housing. So I'm wondering what the numbers would look like if, you know, the 80% AMI, and all the AMI numbers are based on a total housing cost of no more than 30%. If we were to look at 40%, what somebody could afford if they were at 40% of their income, and sort of a thing, if we can help get people into housing, so that they get their foot in the door, this at least gives them a chance to have homeownership. Whereas if we say it's going to be 30% of AMI, or of their income, I'm concerned that we're closing off an option for people who say, I'm willing to make the stretch to try and get into homeownership.
Yeah, so while that's a great exercise, it's not going to be able to, it's not going to be something you can use simply because the standard is 30%, and it's what's used across everywhere in terms of calculating affordability and when your cost burden. That's just a standard that was established by the feds, I think, decade ago, and so that is the number. So looking at 40% isn't going to work from a practical standpoint, it's more of just an exercise that's kind of interesting.
Again, I'm trying, I guess I'm searching for how we can help people make the transition into homeownership. Those who are willing to say, look, I'm willing to put more of my income in to do it.
Well, I mean, people may make that choice anyway, because to the point you're making, a person looking for property, because it's, you know, these units, when they have the income restricted, there's usually waiting lists for them. So, a lot of people can't usually get into these things very quickly anyway, that are at the lower end of the income scale. So people that can do the 40% will look for housing that they can try to buy if the banks will loan to them, right? So that becomes a key thing, if the banks will loan to them at the 40%.
Commissioner Mesa.
Thank you. If we're trying to be creative in how to make things more affordable, I wanted to put this suggestion forward. I have seen a model, I think in Pittsburgh, or in some other medium-sized cities, where you can reduce the housing cost burden by having another entity co-purchase the property with you. So, in this example, it could be a private entity, but it could also be a public entity. It could be Arch, it could be the city of Woodinville. So for example, if I can only afford 80% of that house comfortably at that 30% cost burden, then maybe the city can purchase the other 20% and be co-owners, and you would just make that back if the property ever gets sold. So, that is one model that I have seen being tried out. Maybe it's something we can consider also. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mesa, I think you're bringing up a good point. I think if we really want to create affordable housing, there's a couple of things that need to be done or can be done. Number one, Director Gumbah talked about the stock, and that's just, I just read an article recently in Minnesota, Minneapolis, they did a project, they call it 2024, to increase the housing stock. And they've actually seen rents decline, because they've raised their housing stock by 22%, where the rest of the state has only gone up 14%. So it's shown out there that when you increase the stock, you're going to, and they did the thing about, you know, single-family lots and mixing that kind of in, multifamily in with the single-family lot. Not saying that we need to do that here, but it is a fact that if you increase the stock, it's going to make things more affordable. The other thing, I think, if we really, really are committed to doing something about affordable housing, we, the citizens, need to have skin in the game and do something like he said. Whether it be a bond issue that we pass, or whether we find the funds in the city. But we need to step up and say, yes, we want to help, and we're going to do something. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I see we are all trying to be creative, I'm just trying to think about other examples across the world I've seen on this notion, how to make affordable. And the only two options I really think about, one that you started to say is financially helping people, either special programs, or additional support, or co-ownership. So that's definitely one of potential direction. And the other potential direction, just build more smaller units. So, reduce the size, it automatically reduces price, more people can afford buying things. And in many countries, not suggesting to make it here, you can find very small, small, small apartments. Think about Hong Kong, like the most expensive place in the world for real estate. You can buy extremely small, one-bedroom, one-room place, because it's already expensive. So I don't think it's applicable paths here for Woodinville. But technically speaking, we can say, you know what, don't build townhouses, just build multifamily units, they will be cheaper, and it will help us to have it more affordable. So, I don't think there is easy option here, but between those two, I think the first one has more relevance in our city.
So I just wanted to, these are great conversations, probably be a good conversation when we get back into talking on comp plan stuff. And one of the things, when we get to the comp plan presentation, I'm going to note to you about adequate provisions. All this isn't necessarily part of a development agreement, but we have to, part of our housing requirements are adequate provisions, and I think hang on to these ideas. And when we get talking about those, those will be some things we should pull into those, that conversation, and adequate provisions that we have to provide as part of our comp plan update.
Vice Chair Yarov.
I guess this would be a challenge for the city council to perhaps discuss a variety of creative options of how we can help encourage and support more people getting into homeownership. And whether it's smaller units, as my fellow commissioner has suggested, or bond support or whatever, I think it's a discussion maybe that's worth having to see what we can do to make housing more affordable for people who want to get into the housing market and are struggling. And one of the options I know about that I don't think is probably workable in this country, but in Japan, they have some housing units that are, you know, like maybe 200 square feet, but they have very flexible interiors in them, where you see beds being folded up and turned into desks, things like this. And kitchens and so forth, which come fold down, a lot of creative stuff can be done. And I don't know what we as a city can do, but I think conversation's worth having. And whether it's maybe we have a bond that the city offers to help support affordable housing or some other creative solution, I'd love to see that, and I'd certainly be supportive of it.
Okay. Are we done on this topic? Anything else? Commissioner Lang, do you have anything?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. We are scheduled to go to 10:00 PM, so I would like to take a short break at this time. Let's reconvene at 8:40. Twenty minutes of nine. We'll stand in recess till then. Back in session. We left off the, with number five. We will now move to business, item number six, discussion of the comprehensive plan periodic review, 2024 draft comprehensive plan.
All right. This is, I got quite a few slides on this, but I don't necessarily, I'm not going into great detail on this. But this is kind of basically trying to set up for the public hearing. I don't know if you guys have started receiving your notices on the hearing. We sent those to all the property zip, Woodinville zip codes. I think they, a lot of them, I think, said that they got printed and sent off here. So they should be hitting here, if not this week, hopefully not much later than next week. But we are sending mailed notes to all the property owners with Woodinville zip codes, as well as other, we'll be soon enough putting out social media and other things on it. So this is trying to set that up as we're getting ready for that public hearing to come up. And so this is a chance, because it was actually, we just released the comp plan, the full draft put together was released on Monday, because it took us a little bit to get it from a consultant. We had some technical problems. So now you get a chance to see how all this is starting to fit together. Again, I'll note that the document that you have is a draft. There is still a lot of work to do on it. But you can, and we're going to probably be going back through it and looking at the graphics and things like that, and fonts and things like that. So if you have feedback like that tonight, great, we'd love to have it. But like I said, I'm going to kind of do a high level of talking about the different pieces of this. And then we'll keep refining this all the way up until asking you to take final action on a recommendation for the city council on it. So, any questions before we get started? All right. And as always, feel free to stop me at any point on these slides if you have questions and stuff on it. It's kind of the intent on how to do this. So as noted, this is going to be a discussion on the draft comprehensive plan in preparation for the public hearing. The goal tonight is to kind of just touch on this and get any feedback that you might have to offer. And again, I'll note the public hearing scheduled for October 9th. That starts around seven o'clock. Prior to that, we're going to do an informational meeting. So if any members of the public want to stop in, we're going to put some things up around in here. We'll be available to answer just general questions before the public hearing. And I would note, too, that this is going to be the only item on that agenda. We're not scheduling anything else for the October 9th meeting. All right. Just a reminder, quick about the background. Cities in King County are required to adopt their comprehensive plans consistent with the Growth Management Act, and we have a deadline to complete that, actually, this December. I think we're going to run a little overtime on it, but basically, we're supposed to have this job done by the end of the year. Comp plans, you may recall, they look at a 20-year planning horizon. So that's why you see the term and how we've titled this, the 2044 Comprehensive Plan, because we're looking out to 2044. And part of this, as we were looking at these updates, so there was a couple of things we were looking at, and the biggest changes are a result of changes in state laws. So we have to incorporate those. We also were looking at changes in conditions such as land use, patterns in housing and job growth. Not as much of a change for Woodinville in that area, because a lot of what we're seeing has been very consistent with what the city has adopted as its land use pattern since pretty much almost incorporation. So not a lot of changes there, but because of the state requirements, there are a bunch of really major changes, and we're going to touch on those again, just as a reminder. So community profile is a big piece of this that we start with. You may recall, there was, I think, last year, I think we brought to a draft community profile that kind of gave a summary of the community. I just want to touch on some of the main highlights that we're finding out of that document, including that, you know, Woodinville has seen a steady growth of population, and we're projecting between 17,000 and just under 20,000 by 2044. We're slowly becoming more diversified. So we're starting to see racially, we are, we're still not, you know, that diversified compared to like King County as a whole, or even Washington State. But for Woodinville, which has been not as racially diversified historically, we are starting to see an increase in that. We're also seeing a trend that, you know, the population here is growing increasingly older. And so the median age here, you can see, is actually older in Woodinville compared to King County as a whole, and compared to Washington State as a whole. And then finally, we kind of talked about this actually in the development agreement, household median income in Woodinville is significantly more than Washington State as a whole. And I thought it was interesting to note that household incomes in Woodinville between 2010 and 2020 have increased 44%. Now, housing costs have gone up even more than that. So that's been the struggle. It looks great to see the increase in income. The challenge has been, and it's not unique to Woodinville, is that the housing costs have just basically gone up beyond what the increases in income have been.
Robert, we have a question from Commissioner Chiram Motokov.
I think, I know we quickly touched that on the last meeting, but I'm still trying to understand, when you say becoming more diverse, how you measure that? Because the snapshot is current snapshot, and you're comparing Woodinville with King County and the state. Can you compare Woodinville now versus how it was in the past? So what exactly is making us more diverse?
Yeah, I mean, basically, the information that we have on it is indicating that we actually do have, and that we are racial wise, starting to diversify more and more. Woodinville has been predominantly a white community, and it's been very dominantly white. I don't remember the percentages historically, but the numbers have indicated that we have become increasingly more diversified in terms of race here in the community.
So it's about growing percentage of non-white persons?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Krebs.
Is the 44% increase in household income, is that, are you measuring an individual's growth over that time, or is it just the community as a whole? For example, higher earners have joined the community, kind of showing an increase in overall income?
Yeah. So I mean, it cites you the sources, and I don't remember particularly the breakdowns on everything on this. But the main thing I just can note is that the, I think they're looking at household incomes, and, because that's generally what's being tracked, is household incomes. And in Woodinville, that has increased, and they use like census data and other sources and stuff to calculate that, but it's gone up quite a bit. I believe that, you know, there's been increases because that's just the nature of wages and stuff. But again, the big struggle isn't that wages are going up. The big struggle has been that they're not keeping up with cost of housing. Okay. You may recall, this is the community vision, and this is our current plan. And I'll talk a little bit more about this in the next slide. But basically, the community vision that kind of serves as the foundation for the comp plan is preserving the Northwest Woodland character. Our comp plan focuses on trying to create a compact mix of residential and commercial uses in the downtown. That has been Woodinville's focus, is that growth would be focused in the downtown core area. Meanwhile, we would maintain our industrial areas, and we would try to preserve the predominantly single family neighborhoods that serve as the foundation of the Northwest Woodland characters. May recall from previous conversations, a lot of our forested areas and wooded areas are in those residential neighborhoods. And so that's where a lot of that comes from. And then the ag surrounds the city and also kind of has an influence on our character. But it's the preservation of the single family and that Northwest Woodland character that comes out of that, that really serves as the focus of why we focus growth in the middle, in the downtown core area. So we did, as part of this, when we first kicked this thing off, we had a community survey. I don't know if any of you remember this. And we had asked this question, I know it's hard to see up in there, but this is also in your packet, where we had asked basically the community if, you know, looking at our vision and statement, as to how well basically this is functioning, and whether people don't want to see any change to it, or maybe for the most part, they're happy with it, but maybe some minor changes, or they're happy with it, but maybe a little bit more than just some minor changes. And by far, most people have indicated that that vision statement is basically what they appreciate the most and don't want to see necessarily big changes happening to it. So the vision statement, which I've got highlighted over here in the red box there, it basically is the same thing in the 2015, other than we just updated a couple of words and stuff in it. So you'll see that, you know, the basis of our plan, based on the vision statement, is still following essentially what Woodinville has from essentially its beginning, has been its focus as to how it wants the community to look grow and stuff. And this comp plan tries to continue that, that trend. tries to continue that, that trend. Some of you may recall some of these conversations, housing growth target and capacity. So this was several years ago, we had these conversations. I talked about the Billable Lands Report, which, for King County, which actually, I think they called, the, the old name was Billable Lands, and I'm old enough that I still tend to refer to it that way. I think they now call it the Land Capacity Analysis. But anyway, this is where they took a look, and they, you were to look at your zoning, and you kind of had to calculate your capacity for additional dwelling units, based on your zoning, as well as your housing, or excuse me, your jobs, your employment. And then there was a kind of a negotiation based on that, about breaking this down, and these were all the communities that we were grouped with, as the HDT stands for High Capacity Transit Communities, and Woodenville got grouped into this. You can see the other ones that we compared with. And anyway, at the end of the day, our, our housing target number was 2033, and then based on the initial analysis and stuff that were done back in 2019, you can see what basically we were planning for total by 2044, and how many units we had capacity for by 2044, based on what our zoning and everything was indicating at that time. Now, this is all changed, because, I'll go into the next slide here in a moment about the housing by the different income levels, but this was kind of the baseline as to where we started. So hopefully, this is ringing some bells for everybody.
Commissioner Krebs.
What does the PAA after Federal Way and Renton mean?
Those are actually unincorporated areas. I'm trying to remember exactly where it stood, but the PAA are actually unincorporated King County, and I think these are areas that are within like Federal Way and Renton's growth areas. So, yeah, I thought it was interesting that they would incorporate unincorporated areas, but I think the reason they did that is because if these are in designated urban growth boundaries for these jurisdictions, then they'll, the idea is that they may eventually absorb those, and so they wanted to make sure they were accounting for the housing, because there's already housing and stuff, most likely, in those areas. Great question. Any other questions about this slide? All right, I'm going to talk a little bit now on these next couple of slides about some of the new changes in the state. Again, a lot of this hopefully just sounds like things that we've heard before. So, as I noted before, the Urban Growth Capacity Report had the 2033, but with changes by House Bill 1220, this was no longer the end of our analysis on, on housing. So now we're required, we had this breakdown, that we're required to show capacity to accommodate housing by income groups, and you see up there in the upper right-hand corner, the different income groups that we had to account for. So there was permanent supportive housing, extremely low-income housing, very low-income, low, moderate, and high, and all of these had ranges for the AMI. The good news on it is that in terms of the low income, we actually take low-income, very low-income, extremely low, and the permanent housing, and we actually get to categorize those all actually as one, so that's 80 AMI and below. End up being grouped, but we have to show that we have housing capacity to plan for housing types that fit into that. And it's also important, because there is a tendency, when we look at these target numbers, and I think we kind of, this kind of even came up in the previous conversation on the development agreement, we start wanting to assign actual housing AMI numbers and planning for, which is great, because we want to figure out how to enable those things, but the GMA requirement is more about housing types that support those income groups, not necessarily whether it's 80, 50, 30, 100 to 120 types. We do get into those. That's going to get into more like how adequate provisions and how we're going to enable those things to happen, but the planning requirements for the target numbers has to deal more with housing types that tend to fit into those different categories. So is this ringing bells with folks? And anybody that wasn't aware, that may not have followed this from previously, like some of our new commissioners, high-income houses, those are the detached single-family, those are all the high-income. Middle housing, which tends to be like the townhouses, duplexes, those multiplex units, those tend to be the middle housing, or the moderate, which is the 100 to 120, or can actually get down even to 80 potentially, and then low-income, and all the other ones are the 80% and down below. And those tend to be more of multifamily-type units that are low to mid-rise, so you're talking two, three-story, four-story buildings tend to be the ones that fall in as multifamily. You're not going to see townhomes, because the construction just doesn't support that how, people in that income bracket, that there's housing available for them, like detached, unless you basically have, as a comment was made earlier, the government basically, or Archer, some nonprofit building, specific housing for those groups that they control the incomes on them. So we have to plan for and make sure we're accommodating enough housing in the multifamily, because that's where we're short, in the multifamily mid-to-low-rise range. And then there's a little bit more to it, and I'm going to talk about those in some, in some future slides. The other thing that also had a significant impact is the House Bill 1110, and this is the middle housing. And so in the case of Woodenville, we have to allow at least two housing units per lot. Density no longer plays a factor in terms of how we set our zoning, and then we have to allow at least a minimum of four middle housing types that allow for these two units. So these were a couple of the examples, the stacked flats, the duplex, the townhouse, which looks like a duplex, except for a townhouse, tends to be thought of as taller buildings. And then you've got the cottage housing and the courtyard apartments, which are kind of both similar, where you're basically putting detached, single-family, small units around like essentially an open space or a courtyard. All right, now we're going to go ahead and get into some of the chapters a little bit. And again, I'm going to kind of say at a high level, I'm not going to dive into details, but again, it's like, we go through these individual chapters. If you've got specific questions that you kind of wrote down from, you know, reading through this before the meeting, please feel free to bring those up as we go through them. But anyway, this is kind of how the new organization of this thing has been set up. We've got an introduction and vision, and a lot of this does reflect our current one, but there are some changes. So we have an introduction and vision, land use and community design, housing, economic development, parks, recreation, and open space, transportation circulation, capital facilities and utilities. That is a change, because before, those were two separate chapters. Now we've combined them into one chapter. Natural environment and internal master program used to be one, we've now divided those up into two chapters. And then the climate change and resiliency is a brand-new chapter being added to the comp plan. And it's a new GMA requirement as well. We weren't necessarily required to adopt it with this update, but we were going to be required to eventually adopt it, and because we did a climate action plan, we decided to incorporate it into this update, so we don't have to worry about it later on. So I'll start out going through these chapters individually. Start out with the introduction vision. This is new. You hadn't seen this one before, although it is based on our current comp plan, and so it essentially offers an introduction to the plan. It has the vision statement and 11 guiding principles. All of this is part of our current plan. Planning areas, there was a cleanup, I think I talked to you guys about this in a previous meeting. The map we showed as annexation included that area north of the border up into the Grace Neighborhood Area, and where we had included some of the area like where Brightwater's located, where Costco's located, and up back up in that area. We did do some joint planning with Snohomish County back in the early 2000s and late 1990s, and so we've, but it has not actually been designated as part of Woodenville's growth boundaries. So it's not actually appropriate to include it as a growth boundary, but what we did is we revised this per your guys' comments, and we've identified it as a joint planning area, because we have done joint planning in the area, even though we never did formally adopt that plan, but there was joint effort, so we have identified that. It's just no longer part of the growth boundary area. And then there is a small sliver of King County down in the southeast part of the city. It's basically about a neighborhood block that is incorporated and has been designated by King County as part of our urban growth boundary, and that piece is actually included. And again, there's a map in there that's been updated to reflect all of this. Any questions on that chapter? All right, land use and community design and the city's vision. So this, this is the heart of the comprehensive plan. This is basically the thing that sets the development patterns, and everything else works off of this chapter. So in this, I already talked a little bit about the annexation, because that has to do with urban growth areas. There's also identification of the sub-area plans, future land use map, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a moment, and then also the purpose and description statements that describe each of the future land use designations. Those future land use designations are how we create our zoning districts, so that's why those are very critical as to what those say, because our zoning then is based on those. We don't, we don't deviate, the details and things that worked out in the zoning, but you don't, for example, say, two units in the future land use, and then authorize four and five-unit duplexes, because you'd have an inconsistency between your zoning and your comp plan if you did that. So very important in setting the development patterns for the city. So I'll talk first about the future land use map. This ends up setting what the zoning is, and it's basically, it is associated with the purpose and descriptions. This sets the primary policy statements based on the vision of the land use patterns and how they are, the city is going to grow and develop. And what's important to note on this is that we had four amendments being proposed. One of those has to deal, and I think we talked about this previously, the water district property is going to go from central business district designation to industrial designation. We have the Woodenville Cemetery currently zoned central, or currently has a future land use designation of central business district. This will go to parks. And then we also have what's known as East Rail, that, you know, the abandoned railroad track. We're going to re-designate that from the general commercial designation it has currently, and turn that also into parks, because it's going to become a big trail piece. And then the East Rail Mixed Use Zone, which we'll talk a little bit more about in a later piece, that's the other big map change being proposed on here.
Robert, Vice Chair, you have brought up a question.
I got a question from a citizen. I had no idea what the answer is, but you brought up the question, or the prompt of the question. The Woodenville Cemetery, is that privately owned, or is that publicly owned?
Private or semi-private. I don't know if it's a nonprofit that owns it.
It's a nonprofit.
Which is one of the reasons too, when we did the, when we were looking at the designations, we actually combined the open space and the parks into one, and we actually broadened that to what can be included under the parks designation, which would include something like a cemetery could be included in it.
Commissioner Krebs.
Quick question. So the land that was the track, is that all city-owned now?
What you see up in here, yeah, or if you look in the map, what's owned over there by Old Town and going up north to the border, yes, that is owned by the city.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I don't think, I think there's some parts of the track that we don't own, and then you go further south, King County owns a big chunk of former railroad tracks going down to the southern part, like down by St. Michelle's along 202, along the industrial areas. I think-
I think, don't they own, like, on the other side of the river, all the way down? I don't think we own anything.
Yeah, the Snohomish Trail, they also own that as well.
Along 202 there, we don't own any of that.
Yep. All right, the other thing that had a big impact on this section was the middle housing, and this had a big impact on the purpose and description statements, because as I've noted, the ability to have a density standard no longer works under the new requirements, and we had to basically be able to, we have to allow at least two units per lot regardless of the lot size. So what we did with this is that we moved more into a shape and form description. So up on here, and this is also in your packet, I kind of touched on the description. In this case, I also added the purpose statement. So you can see the woodland residential, which is our R1 zoning, implements this. You can see the purpose statement talks about, these are large lots, and where they're located in the forested portions of the city, and about why we do all of this, and it's because it's difficult to extend public facilities out there, because there are some pretty significant environmental constraints. So that kind of sets the shape and form, and then you have in the description, you can see the current one, where we have density and talk about it. Now you see, it's a mixture of one and two-unit dwellings, because that's what middle housing requires. That implementation zone is R1, and then the minimum lot size, which is based on our current code, and lots up to 35,000 square feet, a one- or two-unit is allowed, and then we talk about, because we do have lots that are a lot bigger, so, and currently, we don't have this requirement about like one or two units per lot, so we need to be able to account for the lots that are bigger. How do you account for additional units on that? And then we kind of did take the density standards, divided it, and turned it into a square footage of land area, and then that's how we determined how additional units could be allowed on the property. And we did that for all of those residential zones, so.
Vice Chair, you have brought up.
Just a quick question, Robert. In the proposed definition, we talk about the minimum lot size is 35,000 square feet, but then we go to talk about on lots up to 35,000 square feet. Why is that relevant in this description?
You mean, why do we go up to 35? Because we do have lots that are-
Why do we discuss lots, provisions for lot sizes less than what the minimum is for this designation?
Yep, we have existing lots in the R1 that are less than 35,000 square feet. They still have to be allowed two units.
Ah, unintended consequence, thank you.
So, yeah, I mean, like I said, that's the required, that's the new requirement. Even the lots less than 35,000 square feet, you have to allow two units on them. Now, one thing I would note is the council said that we would not include ADUs, or we're not going to allow ADUs. So in practice, you're not really going to see that much of a change in terms of the number of units. The main difference is, what is currently an ADU that's limited to, I think it was 11 or 1200 square feet, will not have that same limitation. The second unit can be larger. We are also, though, just again, in case people have concerns about this, council also gave direction that event, we will be adopting design standards to try to maintain, because you can have design standards to try to maintain that detached, single-family look, that single-family look, it's just that you'll have additional units, you can have more than one unit in it, but there will be design standards to try to preserve that general look of single-family in these zones, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions before I go on to housing? This is the other big one we had.
Commissioner Mason.
A question regarding the increase to the two minimum dwelling units. In practice, houses that are on septic, is it possible to support two dwelling units in those types of homes?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you can actually, depending, depending what you're willing to spend, and what the soil, well, because even if the soil types are not good, there are always options, if you're willing to spend the money. I worked in a jurisdiction much like our R1 that had no septic, or had no sewers at all throughout the city, and we had some short plats of nine units on a single-septic system.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Chairman Motokov.
Thank you, just to check my understanding, all this, two units, it's all to allow, not to require, so we are not requiring two units, we're just saying that every new development should allow that, but at the end of the day-
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a minimum requirement. So if somebody decides to still only build one unit, they can, there's nothing wrong with that.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Krebs.
We've probably already gone over this, but I don't remember. So the second units are only rentable units, right? You can't purchase the second unit, because then you're-
No, they'll be able to be purchased.
So long as you don't go under the 35,000 square feet new minimum?
It doesn't matter. The, the second unit can be, you can turn them into condominiums and sell them, that's the thing that we're prohibited, you can't have a requirement any longer under the law that says that it has to be a single ownership for both the units on the property, that's some of the changes that have happened. So if a property owner wants to either condominiumize, or if this new unit lot subdivision comes into effect, or when it does come into effect, there'll be ability to split these off, these units off, and sell them individually if they want to.
Can you, will they, will they keep replicating?
No, but, we, which is a great, great question, which was one of the big anxieties that was expressed to the legislators, and so there's going to be a distinction between, with these unit lot subdivisions, there's going to be a distinction between what they termed, and we'll probably use similar language, the parent lot, which is the 35,000 square-foot lot, or the existing lots today, whatever size that is, that's the parent lot, and then these unit lot subdivisions will be, will have like a child lot, or we'll have some other terminology, we'll come up with it, and then those, you can't further subdivide those unit, those unit lot subdivisions. We'll make sure to be writing provisions and having restrictions on the properties. So for example, if somebody has, if it's a 35,000 square-foot lot, and that's the parent lot, and say the zoning never changes, as long as the zoning remains minimum lot size, while they can create, they can have two units on it, and they can create an individual ownership situation for each one of those units, and including, if they do a unit lot subdivision, they can do that, if they want to, they're not going to be able to create additional parent units that can then be further divided. They're not going to be able to create additional parent units that can then be further divided up with two units apiece. So it's going to be very important that we write the regulations. The law, state law allows for us to keep that restriction in place. And it's going to be, so it'll be very important as we write the laws that we're very clear on how that all works. I still got some details I got to figure out on the lot, unit lot subdivision. But if, if we can do what I think we can do, it shouldn't be too difficult to make sure that there is no confusion, that you can't take a parent lot at its minimum lot size and further divide it up.
Commissioner Young.
Sorry. When we start talking about those acre properties and our forest area, are we going to adjust our tree code to try to maintain the trees that are on those lots?
No, I mean, our tree code already has, has a minimum requirements and stuff.
Yeah, I know.
I don't, I wouldn't anticipate us changing those standards.
Okay, so they can lose trees.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, you can do that today. We have minimum density, tree density standards that are required. And I mean, we're going to have to think through some of this stuff because as we create the unit lot subdivisions, right now, the tree standards are interpreted to apply to individual lots as well as to overall subdivisions. And we're going to have to be doing some thinking through to make sure we've got the proper protections and we're getting what we want with those tree codes and protections and stuff like that. So there is going to be some, there are going to be some things that are going to have to be worked through on all of this. Okay. All right. The other chapter that really took a major change revisions was the housing. And again, this is to reflect the new housing requirements. And so, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of things before I talk about those changes we've talked about before. There is, the, the analysis in here is much more detailed in terms of looking at needs. Where before we've had policies and goals that talk about needs, now we actually start deep diving into needs. We also have to look at the potential for displacement. We also have to look at needs and account for different ethnic groups that particularly have historically been disadvantaged in terms of the housing types and stuff. So there's all this kind of analysis and stuff that takes a look at these things in terms of the Woodinville context. We also had to evaluate household income and cost burdens included in here. And then that big one that I've already talked about a little bit more about was the housing target by household income groups. So the housing chapter had major changes to it, incorporates a lot more analysis, incorporates these other new requirements on accounting for housing by income groups. So I'm going to go, I've got a couple more slides on it before, before I go to the next couple of slides on this. Any questions on what I've got up here right now? Okay. So you, you may recall, this is where we start talking about the breakdown on our housing targets. So the, remember I told you we had a overall housing target of 2,033 units by 2044? That now is further broken down into housing target numbers by low income, moderate income and high income groups. And so, and these were assigned to us by the countywide planning policies, which kind of actually pulled these initially from Commerce's analysis about needs in individual jurisdictions. And one of the ways Woodinville decided that they were going to address our low income housing stuff was by converting currently underutilized commercial land to be rezoned to this new mixed-use, East Rail mixed-use or known as EMU, which when we get to the zoning components of it, we will have inclusionary zoning requirements. I do want to note, again, the background on this did not start with the state requirements. It just so happened to be a happy coincidence that a policy that the council originally adopted in the economic development plan that centered around the fact that we're going to be putting these huge investments, I mean, multiple millions of dollars into that East Rail. And the city council wanted to figure out how to get maximum value back for that huge investment. And one of the ways that this was being thought about was by, we already allow mixed use on, you know, the CBD side of everything. So let's look at allowing mixed use on the, what is currently the GB zone side of it. And like I said, it just so happened to be a happy coincidence that this actually works for us in terms of meeting our housing requirements as well. So, you know, we went through a whole lot of discussions. I mean, there's been many, many discussions on this. This is the current proposal that Planning Commission ended up with. So this is the one that we have in the current comprehensive plan. So before I go to the next slide, any other questions? We've really talked about this a lot, but I just wanted to check if there was any questions about it. Okay. I wanted you guys just to be aware of this thing because the housing element, there is a requirement in the King County planning wide, in the King County, countywide planning policies that the King County Affordable Housing Committee has to review our housing element. And so we just submitted this, I think, a couple of weeks ago. We actually had, already had a preliminary conversation with them. We're expecting to get some draft comments back from them by, I think, first or second week of October.
Next week.
Next week. And then we'll have a chance to kind of go over these comments and talk with them about them and work through them. And then they will be taking their recommendation on formal comments in a letter that will go out, will be taken to the Affordable Housing Committee at their, at a November 7th meeting. And then that'll be King County's, this King County Affordable Housing Committee's official comments on our housing element. And if any of you are curious about what they've been doing, if you wanted to do a Google search of King County Affordable Housing Committee, you can go and find their website and they actually post all of the comment letters for the jurisdictions that have been completed so far, they're posted on their website. So if any of you have any interest, you can, and if you have any difficulty, just contact us and I can look up and send you the email. I don't have it off the top of my head. I'd have to go look it up. But I, I searched for it by just doing the King County Affordable Housing Committee and was able to go to their website on that. So anyway, so I just wanted you to be aware of that because I think that's also going to kind of influence on how I, we'll kind of continue the, the next steps after the public hearing on this. All right. Next chapter, economic development. The only thing I really want to note on this is that there was a 2022 economic development plan that the council adopted. That's where that EMU had its origins in, but it has a whole lot of other things, goals and policies and stuff. The economic development plan was updated to reflect that 2022 plan. Any questions on that? All right. Parks, recreational and open space. Minimum edits, because we just did an update, although surprise, you know, it's kind of crazy to think about it. It's been almost four years, although I think we adopted this in 20, it was 2020, but it was 2021, I think, when it got adopted. But anyway, it's, it's already been, like I said, almost four years on it. But that was a pretty in-depth, pretty detailed review. And we didn't really see any conditions changing, although we've gotten some comments back about asking us to potentially make some changes in it. But we're recommending at this point, until we do our next update on our parks and recreation plan, we didn't see a need to really change the goals and policies in this. Next one, transportation circulation. This actually had, there was a really major separate effort. We talked a little bit about this. So this was revised. We just recently council adopted the transportation, an updated transportation plan, which reflects the 20-year plan. And so we've incorporated all of this, including the elevation of other modes of transportation have been much more integrated into our transportation circulation plan, elevated the importance, looked at this in a, in a more comprehensive point. And then the main thing to note is that this thing also does include fiscal constrained project list. The one thing I do want to note, we had a conversation about this back at July 24th meeting. It was raised at that time about possibly wanting to change one of the policies. If, if the Planning Commission wants to do that, that's fine. We'll keep moving forward with that. But one of the things I need you to be aware of is that we're not going to make the change in the document. Instead, what will happen is it'll be treated as kind of a separate go-along. And so when you make your recommendations, if you want to include change in this policy as well as any of the other, if anything else that comes up in the transportation, they will be separated out as a separate. And the reason for that is, is because the transportation plan was adopted by ordinance. And if council decides to take your recommendation and make additional changes to these transportation goals and policies, we're going to also have to have another ordinance that amends the transportation plan because we need to maintain that consistency between the two. So you can't amend the transportation plan, or excuse me, amend the transportation element to have different language in the transportation plan and maintain that. The transportation plan will have to be amended as well. So we'll call these out separately. Any changes that you want to propose in those? And then that'll go to the council that way. They'll decide whether they want to incorporate those. And if they do, then like I said, there'll be a additional ordinance developed to amend the transportation plan at the same time that the comp plan is being amended as well. Does that make sense what I'm talking about?
Well, Robert, when's the appropriate time for the commission to make that recommendation?
Well, when you take your final action on it. But I mean, as we go along in here, I will double check with you to make sure that is what the majority wants to do. And then when you take your final action on making a recommendation, we'll have that, we'll, we'll make sure that that's all set up properly for your wording on it.
Would that be at this meeting or the next meeting or when?
You mean, as far as?
The commission making that recommendation to change.
Well, your formal recommendation will be done at the end of the process, which we'll talk a little bit more about. But it, it's not this meeting or the hearing. It'll be at a future Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you.
So the only thing I, I just want to double check is that that majority does want to go with that, and that's fine. But I did want you to be aware on how we're going to have to handle that. Anything that was adopted, adopted by ordinance, changing in the comp plan requires a corresponding ordinance change as well. Things that were adopted by the resolution, like the economic plan, the, the climate element and the housing thing that we pulled in the housing, those were all by resolution. So inconsistencies between those is fine because those are only resolutions, they're not ordinances. Ordinances will trump a resolution. It's the way the order priorities go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about this or the transportation or anything else you want to mention about the transportation plan?
Commissioner Chair, Mardukov.
I see you have a special part of this section on bicycle facilities. And as far as I see, you just described the current state. Are there any future goals that should be part of this section?
I'm not sure I follow, follow the question.
As far as I can see, and I'm on page 359, if it helps, on the overall packet, it's about bicycle facilities. And I believe it's part of transportation section you're describing right now.
One more, what page are you on?
359.
359, thank you.
And, yeah, 359.
Are you, are you actually in the?
In the overall.
You're in this document?
No, that's the page number.
What section?
It's on transportation. Let me try to find.
You're in the draft comprehensive plan, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So it is. Before fright.
What, what's the goal or, is it a goal or policy you're talking about or is it just general stuff?
So here is page 117.
Okay.
So I'm trying to distinguish between current state and future state. And as far as I see here, it's only about current state. Is that right? Am I reading it correctly?
That map is correct.
So is that any, anything we should add here for the future plan, for goals? Or it's only saying about, that's what we are and that's it?
Yeah, so all of this information is like, a lot of this is the walking, it's a lot of the existing. And then you have in the list of projects in here, that's the stuff, that's where we're talking about what's being proposed to be added into the system. So you've got a, you've got a list of projects in here. And they break down by various categories. And it's, and in those categories then is like where you'll see, I think one of them, if I'm not mistaken, make sure I can remember, a breakdown of the categories. In the list of those projects, though, you do have some, like your trails and stuff like that. And so I, I think when we originally were talking about this, I think we had the documents where we broke them down. In the transportation plan, they actually do break down the list of projects by the different categories like capacity, level of service. Then there's also, I think, the pedestrian and stuff like that, if I remember. And then this, because there's a, there is a physically constrained requirement to this document, it looks like, I think, they just put all the listing of them all together. But this includes any of what we are looking for, for future. And then there is a separate document. We actually do have a non-motorized transportation plan that's been adopted separately as well. So, so we do have all of those things in various forms and shapes. This though is talking about what needs to be in the transportation element itself specifically. If you want to get into the make details of all the stuff, then you want to go actually to the transportation plan.
Okay, thank you.
Great question, though. Any other questions?
Not this time.
All right. Capital facilities, the main things to note on this, I already mentioned this, that we are combining the capital facilities element and utilities element into one chapter because there was so much overlap. One of the big things, we do follow a lot of the goals and policies, but we did also need to incorporate consistency with our resiliency element. Plus, I think PSC also had some stuff related to climate change that we also incorporated in it. So the capital facilities and utilities also reflect some of the requirements, like the private utilities like PSC have, that they have these new mandates for, you know, green energy and stuff like that. So some of the changes are reflected about that. And then we did a lot of updating. Yeah, I guess we didn't have, I didn't do another slide on that. But a lot of the other information, there's just updating plans and stuff in there as well. Any questions? All right. The natural environment, changes to the golden policy, incorporate more in tree and climate policies. We also, there, you guys, when we brought this to you, I think we had a couple of meetings. There was some input you had, and so we incorporated that. I would, do want to note for you that we did receive some comments from the state, from Fish and Wildlife. We're waiting kind of on their final comments, and then we're going to sort through those. But we'll probably present those. I think we should have those to you in time for the hearing. And we'll kind of talk through those with you a little bit more in detail. And, because we'll do an evaluation as to what of those we might want to look at incorporating, if any, and then kind of just talk through those a little bit. So may have a little bit more on this to bring forward to you. Because a lot of the Fish and Wildlife also tends, seems to reflect a lot of the tribe comments and stuff too. So I just wanted you to be aware about that. Anything else, Amanda, you want to note? Okay. Any questions on that? All right. And then the Shoreline Master Program. This used to be part of the natural element. We separated it out. The main thing to know on this is that we really can't touch this in terms of the goals and policies because these were all adopted through the Shoreline Management Program. And you can only amend goals and policies that are part of your shoreline program only through a shoreline process, not through a GMA process.[1770.98]